Hey Lamar, we don't have a quorum until Jill gets here, but you might want to kick us off because there's things we can do.
Yeah. There we go. We can go ahead and call to order, I guess. Are we going to go with? Do we want to start with the public comment, or?
Yeah. We have some public here. Although, are you also for them? So.
Does anyone want to? Speak to the, any public comments at this time?
Sounds like no.
Alright. Um, do you want to do the minutes, or since we don't have a quorum, can we?
Can we wait on this? We do have a quorum.
So I'm late.
Yeah, that's.
I did not have any comments. Did anybody else have anything?
Oh, I did go through these. I did go through it, yeah. I don't, I didn't read it as carefully as I often do, but I don't have any comments.
Okay, um, do someone want to move to accept the minutes?
I can do that.
Okay, do you have a second?
A second?
Okay, thank you.
So, Jill wants?
That was Ellie.
Oh, it was Ellie, sorry. I heard your voice, I couldn't see Ellie, sorry.
Okay, um, well then I think we can move on to the initial. Oh, yes, sorry.
Hi.
Hi. Alright, so Matt, were you going to, or Emily going to give an overview, or?
Yeah, I can go ahead and get started. So tonight on the planning, our commission's agenda is initial review for the Glazer specific plan. I have set out a rough timeline for tonight's evening because we do have a hard stop around 7:50 PM, so the planning commission can go next door to the select board meeting. I'll start by giving a brief overview of process, then turn it over for the applicant. We can have general discussion and then the planning commission has an option to make the decision. Oh, so this is an application for a specific plan for 100 unit residential subdivision. A specific plan is not like normal development review board proceedings. It starts with the planning commission and select board first. And a specific plan provides a substantial benefits. In this case, the applicant is proposing open space as their substantial benefit, and they're doing so in two locations. Forty-two acres surrounding Windswept Farm and 11 acres of Viewshed along Mountain View Road. The open space would be given to the town, and the applicant's narrative letter goes into more detail about the proposal and then open space as well as the town plan goals that would be upheld by the substantial benefit. The decision for the planning commission tonight is to make a tentative determination that a substantial benefit may result from adoption. There is a quorum here tonight, but there's not the whole planning commission. And I think that's okay, because if the planning commission moves this forward, you would schedule a community meeting, and that's where the public would be noticed. There would be a letter mailed to a budding property owners, we'd get information out on the website to host a community meeting. We're recommending if you move it forward, that would take place on November 15th. If the planning commission goes the other way and decides that an application may, this application may not result in substantial benefit, you should discuss with the applicant why their proposal doesn't meet the open space criteria in chapter nine. What follows is a proposed motion to make a decision. And I can screen share any of the documents throughout this evening as requested. Thank you.
Great, may I begin? So first, I want to thank the commission for allowing us to present this. My name is Jack Jacob Glazer, and I'm representing my wife as well. We are both longtime residents of Williston, and we're the property owners of the property in question. What, one of the things that we've noticed over time in Williston especially, when there is a large potential development, it seems that a developer will try to maximize the amount of houses. They really push the envelope. In fact, they push it and they push it, and what is usually the result is maybe not the most desirable place, or the most desirable building environment at the end. My wife and I have a very different philosophy. We've, as longtime residents of Williston, come to really appreciate the community, and what we would like to do is work with the town. As you can see from the proposed plan that we have in place, we're keeping a substantial part of the land open. We've spoken to Mike Moss of the Woodswept Farm, and the location and the amount of land that we have open actually will allow the horse farm to stay in operation. In addition, I think there's a substantial amount of land that would be beneficial to the town for recreational purposes, for bike path or wilderness park and potentially a park. Keeping the Viewshed along Mountain View Road open is also another, what we see is a big benefit for the town. We could under, by understanding it's under current regulations, have 141 houses in the, in being built. We're looking to do 100. We're looking at a really compact design to minimize the impact on the, on the environment, on the land to reduce any environmental impact that we have, keep, make it nice for people to walk together and communicate closely to Williston. As a business owner in Williston, also, I know that there's a huge housing shortage, and we feel that to be responsible for our generation, for future generations, we need to have more housing in Williston, reduce the pricing, and allow more people to be able to be homeowners. So we do think it's a responsible thing to build homes as well. So what we're proposing, we think, is an opportunity for the town to work with a responsible owner and a builder who understands what our priorities are and what our values are, and really to be able to create something unique, I think, to the town. And that's why we do think that a special plan is something that would be a benefit to all of the Williston residents. Ken, is there anything you'd like to add to what I just said?
Well, just a couple of things, sort of technical things that I would mention. So, a specific plan, it's something that's, there's a whole chapter in the bylaw that deals with specific plans. There have been very few of them that have been proposed, and even fewer still that have been successful. It's a section of the bylaw that was created because not every project fits neatly into the constraints and the requirements of the zoning regulations as they're construed in the other chapters of the bylaw. And so for a specific plan to be approved, as it states in the bylaw, the town has to be able to find that there's a substantial public benefit on one or more of the criteria that are defined there in chapter nine. And one of those has to do with open space, and in particular, Viewshed assets. And this particular property, the Viewshed there off of Mountain View Road is specifically listed in the bylaw as an example of one of the things that the town is potentially looking to preserve. One of the things I would point out is that in the residential zoning district, which is where this property is located, there actually isn't an open space requirement embedded in the bylaw. In the Agriroll District, there is, but not in this district, which means that when the town is able to get open space assets, it does, does it through incentives that are built into the growth management process, but they're not, they're not flat-out requirements like they would be in the Agriroll zoning district, so. This is a way for the town to make sure that it can get this Viewshed, which is, if you've never walked or ridden your bike, or even driven your car down Mountain View Road, take a look at it, because the view of Camel's Hump is quite spectacular. So, I would, I would point out that in particular, that we do think that there is a substantial public benefit from all of the open space that could be preserved for the town, whether it's for Windswept Farm, but also for the Viewshed. We do believe that there is a substantial public benefit to be gained by the town. And some other opportunities for the town to build out some of the pedestrian infrastructure that it would like to see, in particular along Mountain View Road, as well as some paths that are proposed through the site. But having said that, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have about any of the particulars about what we put forth in the, in this initial proposal.
I'd be interested in details on the path line that's next to Mountain View, but has a looks like, if you could talk through, talk us through what that does.
I guess I'll speak up on that. That, I mean, it's more just letting you know that there's going to be east-west connection there. But because there's a reasonable drop off of Mountain View Road, did not think it was appropriate to shut it up tight to Mountain View Road, so I think that just seems to be the best location, but it's conceptual.
Yeah, I think that's an important point to make, is this is a conceptual drawing, and for the planning commission, it's sort of parallel to the DRB process. The DRB would see a pre-application, a sketch concept, where you have a general gist of things, but you don't know, you know, is this going to fully comply with the bylaw? There's going to be another iteration at discretionary permit level, so the DRB sees a pre-app, and in this case, I think the planning commission should treat it the same way. And there's opportunity throughout the specific plan process to further refine some of the design elements that are being shown as part of the.
And I would also say, Chapin, you know, for us, we discuss what we might show within that open space area up there near Mountain View Road. And my view of it is, is that it's essentially, it's a, it's an open palette, and I think it would be, I don't know, it would be a good idea to prejudge what the town wants to do. That path, as we've sort of shown it conceptually, that may be what's the best thing that the town would like. There could be any number of other things. It could be some sort of a formal recreation area. It could be nothing, or just left, you know, blank. So, you know, we're not, we're not wedded to, this is what we think it should be. We're simply showing, we know that the town wants a pedestrian connection along Mountain View Road. There's an official map that talks about that, so we understand that, and, you know, we want to do that, so.
So to clarify my question for everybody, um, I, you know, I can infer what was there. If you were to not give that land to the town and build more houses there, the DRB would require you to put a sidewalk along, not, I assume. You know, if it were offered, as they do on most, anybody's putting it.
I saw, I saw, yes.
So I was assuming that there would have been a sidewalk, so then instead, if you're giving the land to the town, you can get open, that's a wonderful thing. But also say it's putting in a sidewalk, and I thought by putting that line there, maybe you're saying that you would build a, a connecting path there. I thought that maybe that was part of the offer, part of it.
From the developer's standpoint, yes, we're prepared to build that path.
Okay, that was why I asked.
But, but I think what Ken said is important too. If, if through the process, the town would rather delay that, or has different plans, but we're prepared to build it if that's what's wanted, and if it wants to be wavy. I know it wants to be, just, just by land form, it wants to be a little bit off of Mountain View.
It's all good. Okay, I have some more questions, but I think I should cede for a while.
Well, I had a question on the path. I like the idea of expanding it, but is there any way, and I can't see the map, you know, to the left, but is there any way to connect it towards, like, South Ridge, or, you know, because right now you've got to go on to Old Stage Road in order to go across, and in, like, through South Ridge versus on a path. So that, I mean, I don't know whose land that is, and I, but I'm just wondering if that's at all a possibility.
So Kate, if you were to look at, on the left-hand side, so there's a green area, I don't know if the staff can use their cursor to highlight it.
But I can't see what's left of that.
Yeah, there we go. So there's a, there's two parallel lines that, that end at the, the western side or the left-hand side of the subject property. Can, could you sort of move the cursor over that?
This?
Yeah. So that's an easement, right, there you go, thank you. So that's an easement that came out of when North Ridge was developed. So, so that is there, and then there would be some potential to have some sort of pedestrian path that might connect in through there. Permitting would be, that would be, you know, a challenge, because it may require going through wetlands. And then, you know, that would be something that, you know, you have to get the state to sign off on it, so. So, but that would be a potential connection over to the west, because you've got between this property and South Ridge, you've got North Ridge. So, that would, that would be the way we'd get to South Ridge, would be to go through North Ridge.
Right, well, you know, they added a path. Right, and that's great. Just, yeah, exactly. Just hoping, you know, that someday we can connect it somehow, some way up to Old Stage. So you'd have to go through North Ridge, I mean, if this could ever happen, and then take a path out up there.
Right.
This whole area is wetland.
Right, and so this property doesn't abut South Ridge. That's the, you know, that's, in a nutshell, that's probably the biggest limiting factor, it doesn't abut it.
Does anyone else, Jill or Ellie, or? Anyone else have any questions or thoughts? If not, Chapin, please go ahead.
Sure. Um, first of all, I've not part of the specific plan process, just I like seeing that there's duplexes and that they're pretty compact, because clustered development is less infrastructure per unit, not because of less conflict, because of less disturbance. And duplexes are better for heat loss, and so that's pleasing to see those elements, and also to see the wildflower circle line up with the road across. I mean, it's obviously good thought when it's into this plan, and, and I appreciate it. So the questions I can ask are not out of lack of appreciation, what is there? When you came to us in the winter, I think it was, I said there were two things we'd been hearing. One is needing an east-west connection through to Old Stage Road from South Ridge and and the other is affordable housing. And I didn't see either of those on this plane, and I wondered if you considered those, and the first one obviously connects to what Kate is saying, is I was hoping that you would find a way to connect to the existing rec path that goes behind Allenbrook School, and then through Coyote Lane and all that, and through half of North Ridge.
The larger open space, you know, it would be proposed to go to the town of Williston. As a developer, I can assure you that I can't get approval for that path. The town would have a much easier possibility of getting approval once they own it. I would see that it might be, it would either have to be creative, or it might have to be boardwalk. But it's nothing that a developer would be able to get approved. So we are giving you the ability for that east-west connection, because all of that land is there, and we're proposing a path between the two development areas. So it, it gives, it gives anywhere along that full stretch, and including all the open space there, gives a lot of options, but I'm not going to speak out of turn, you know, that it's a likelihood, and just the opposite. I know from 37 years of doing this, that I wouldn't be able to get approval for a path through there.
We asked the same question, my wife and I asked the same question.
On the, on the affordability part of this, by going from 141 down to the 100, unfortunately, that's, that's not a part of this proposal. There is four different styles of townhomes there that give different price points, but they would not be affordable numbers.
And there was something that I thought of right after I said those two things back last minute, which is that the town is also seeking a community center. And did you give any thought to anything about that?
Well, I think that was part of the thinking, was to not propose anything in particular for how the open space might be used, assuming that the town is going to have some process for how it would decide it would want to use the land. It seemed to me that it would be presumptuous of us to be able to, to make a determination for what the consensus in the town would be, how they would want to use it.
And the staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that's all kind of parrot before the horse for tonight. This is simply, does the open space, does the protection of Camel's Hump, does the, you know, the continued operation of, of the farm meet, you know, may, may it be enough to continue?
Yeah, that's correct.
And I wasn't thinking that a community center would be given to the town, but that the layout of the land that is being given would be a different shape if, if the idea was to have a community center. Okay. I think that, I think those are my questions about understanding.
Matt or Emily, could, Chapin had mentioned, if, you know, this was a specific plan and they built out as much as they could, that they may be required to put in a path anyway. Can you give a little, I guess, more information on that? Like, what? I see we're getting quite a bit of open space. But and I think that's great for the, the horse farm and the view. But if, if this were not considered a substantial benefit, what would likely result, I guess? I don't know if you can answer that, but.
Yeah, that's a good question. So if they were to go through, I guess the easiest way to answer this is if we were to go through the traditional development review process, any land that's not wetland basically could potentially be developed, because as Ken said earlier, there's no quantitative open space requirement here, and in fact, chapter, the chapter for the residential zoning district even says farmland protection here isn't even the highest priority. Expect to see houses in the residential zoning district. So it would likely be a higher level of, of density, and specific plan states that mere compliance with the bylaw is not the substantial benefit. So things like sidewalks along the street, or a multi-use path along Old Stage and Mountain View Road, those would be things that would just be required as part of the development review, whether it's the irrevocable offer and the easement for it, or constructing it, that depends on the scale of development that's being proposed. So if this was just regular development review, we would say, yeah, give us an easement through the wetlands, so maybe we could have an option to connect to that far southwestern corner, but everybody would know that that land is very constrained and would be challenging, but we would ask for, give us that floating easement, that right to connect towards South Ridge.
I can add to the question a little, I think, a little bit. The, the upper area is the most developable area. The regulations do not require preservation of that view. And I would certainly have 141 homes here, and the area between the upper development and Mountain View Road would be the minimum setbacks. That's the easiest land to develop. But we did feel it was important, regardless, I think the public benefit based on all the letters that were submitted is probably met by, by preservation of the mouse's operation, but me personally, not having been associated with that farm, it's the view of Camel's Hump.
If there were going to be an affordable housing component, and we were not going through the specific plan process, we wouldn't have 141 dwelling units. It would be a lot more than that.
Because of affordability.
Because of, you would potentially either have an applicant that would look to get the density bonus that's available, or they would be building a combination of one and two bedroom units. One bedroom units are considered a half of a dwelling unit under the dwelling unit equivalent provisions. So you'd be looking at a very different kind of plan, you know, if that were, if that were the, sort of the primary goal that was trying to be met.
It's, it's just a really important goal of the town that's not being met, and I personally have no problem with density in order to meet it, especially when you're in the water and sewer district. To me, that's why the incentives are the way they are.
Cool.
It also wouldn't get built for about 20 years, given the constraints of growth management right now.
No, if it was deemed part of the specific plan. Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, you know, can someone scroll down a little bit? I just want, um, no, the other way, sorry, up, I guess. How your mind works, yeah. Um, how? My, okay, is it 500 feet and then 250 feet? Is that correct, what I'm seeing that that's on each, so on Mountain View?
It's conceptual, but along Old Stage Road, it currently shows 500 and shows 250 along the westerly line, yes.
Okay.
And the, the units on that upper side, the north side of the road, those are also, you're, you're seeing way over them, because there's a 40-foot drop from the northwest corner where you get your view to where, like, the entrance of that road is. But all of those, all of those yellowish units are one-level units. So that's also helpful.
It is.
Great, because that was my next question, so thank you.
Yeah, so there, there are contour lines there, if you see those curvy lines, so.
Those are 10 footers.
Those are 10-foot contours, so you know, anywhere that's driven on Mountain View Road, you know the road is a high point, and you're, you know, everything goes downhill from there.
And having those be one-story is huge, because.
They could be, they could be quite a bit higher, and they still wouldn't impede the view, but
Right, you still see the mountain.
The one-story are also, a lot of people want them, because a lot of us are aging, and so they're desirable.
Um, just one other factual question. Just one other factual question, which is the part, if you were to scroll the other way, that's the around the horse farm. What is, what was the plant? Was the plan to deed that to the town for the horse farm to use? Was that the plan?
That's if that's what the town, you know, we would offer actually to the town. And like with the Mahan Farm, which is across the street from the fire station, where the town owns that, it's leased to Cochran
Yes.
farm for a dollar a year and they grow corn on it. The the town could enter into a similar arrangement is for the horse farm, if that's what the town wanted to do.
So how much of that land is not wet?
The, we just had the consultant do the northerly border of that. There is some upland area within that and also it it's it's not wetland, wetland until you get in the woods. It's that wet meadow, you know, that's always been used as part of the horse operation. And it can continue to be used for that.
I understand.
There's definitely some upland areas in there, but there's no sense having those areas that way.
The only reason I was clarifying is if you weren't to do a specific plan and you were to try to put more houses on the property, I was guessing the constraints are significant in that part.
They would, they would all be in that upper part between the upper part and Mountain View Road.
Thanks. Maybe, you know, one of the things I would also love to just put out there. We really, as I said before, my wife and I would really like to work with the town. If we're not able to do a special plan, I think, you know, we're going to bow out and we will, you know, look at selling the land to a developer who is probably going to want to come in there and maximize everything, including all the land up at the Mountain View Road and as much of the other places that they can squeeze houses into. So, you know, I think now I just want to make sure that you guys recognize this is an opportunity to work with us to get what is good for for, we all think it's good for the town. And if that is not, you know, what the commission decides, that's fine. But our intentions are, we're going to give it one shot and then, you know, we'll we'll go the same route that most of the other property owners in Williston have gone so far. When you move right up the street view of Google from Mountain View Road. My impression is we looked at from that viewpoint, as you look at Camel's home, you look off at about a forty-five degree angle. I was just trying to visualize.
So that hill that's a little bit higher is about, I just came that way tonight. And that that hill that you do see, that's about dead perfect for
These houses would be about up to where the first taller vegetation is. Is that right?
I'm not positive.
I guess two hundred and fifty feet.
Well, it's five hundred feet from the intersection of Old Stage and Mountain View.
Way down there, but up at this where we are right now.
Yeah, there the two fifty is more than enough because you don't get the view until you just get to about even with that last ranch house.
I was just trying to visualize and I I I'm thinking it would be.
There you can see Camel's hump into the to the left of that hill I was saying. See part of it.
I always like to think in terms of a football field. Football field is three hundred feet.
Yeah, it's a lot.
So two hundred and fifty feet, not quite the whole length of the football field, but a pretty good distance.
No, it is that field. It's just half hay. The tractor's there, too.
And the tree line along Old Stage Road is higher than any of the houses would be.
Yes. And so on that end, I think the five hundred feet is about what's known on the far end.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure. I'm not sure if it's quite that far, but it's five hundred feet. We didn't locate the, I don't know if it's that way when our survey crews out there.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? I see that it's seven thirty-six, so we have a few more minutes. Or is there a another item we can go to? Or how do you want to proceed, Matt or Emily?
Yeah, so the next step would be to make a motion if to move it forward to community meeting.
In terms of process, Emily, would this entail like one of our commissioners joining like a subgroup committee like we kind of had with the N E C S and Alex was sort of serving in the role?
Yes. So in terms of process, we warned the public community meeting for November fifteenth. We would solicit input via a survey and start gauging people's interest in an advisory committee. And put together a representative from various town boards, representatives of the adjacent neighborhoods. And they would assist the applicant and staff in the nuts and bolts of the specific plan, which is finalizing, you know, the site plan elements, what town plan and bylaw amendments need to be made to support this specific plan. And and that's when we would go into more the nitty gritty of of this application is following the community meeting.
Is it a benefit to the owner other than being able to accelerate development? There's one other possible variation from the requirements of the bylaw evident in this concept plan, which is we have more than forty dwelling units on a dead end. So our normal access standard is for forty, we have fifty.
Fifty-six and forty-two.
Fifty-five and forty-two.
And the multi-use path would be built to support emergency if necessary in between the two.
So a slight exceeding of those standards and probably one where the the review committee might seek a little bit of input from the fire chief or public works director or both. Is that acceptable if there's some design mitigation, i.e. hardening up the path so it's drivable or looking at the way the turnarounds work on those two roads. But it's a few more units than forty, not twice as many units as forty. So but we would identify that in a staff review as this is something that couldn't happen under the normal bylaw that could happen under a specific plan. And that, so that and the and the timing under growth management is obviously the the big change. And between the wetlands and the land that's potentially being given to town, it's obvious why it's a dead end.
Yeah, and for the planning commission to know, you know, the last specific plan involved Vtrans right of way and that added a level of complication that far outweighs, I think, the complexity here. Like, once you crack into Vtrans right of way and sidewalk specifications and easements, it got really complicated. This is very simple in terms of it abuts town roads. And we're talking about open space. We're not talking about street infrastructure as a substantial benefit.
One other question is just are if with the wetlands that would be given to the town that takes it off the tax rolls, is that an issue? Or is that, is it desirable for the town to have that control of the wetlands? Well, wetland doesn't do a lot for the tax rolls anyway. So, you know, what what happens Yeah, you know, some some land becomes town-owned land. Some land is developed and privately owned and and, you know, all of those houses become improvements that do go onto the tax rolls. So probably far exceeding anything the town loses by the wetlands coming off.
Yeah, I think the biggest determination of the value of land for taxation purposes is is what's its development potential? So if it if it doesn't have any development potential, it doesn't really matter who owns it. It's it's, you know, how it's going to be assessed for taxation, it would be a wash either way.
And it's potentially something that could be given to a land trust, in which case I don't know if there'd be any taxes.
I don't know about that.
I mean, if it was owned by a non.
If you had a conservation easement on it, you would be achieving the same thing because you're you're stripping away the development potential. And that's the big driver of the valuation, whether it's for sale or whether it's for taxation purposes.
This is large enough to be a land use study, too.
So essentially, the four of us have to choose as to whether this could or could not result. And in a substantial benefit, which is that the open space asset ident, so are these open space assets identified in the town's comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so.
The one, the one with the view shade, yes.
Yep. Okay, so if, you know, should we go ahead and take a poll? Is that how you, is that how we go about it, Matt?
Well, you can, you can do a motion at a second and you can vote, or if you just want to go around and ask folks if they're ready to move on to that vote first, you can do that.
Did the planning commissioners feel that they're ready at this point in time?
As ready as I'll ever be.
I have a little bit of hesitation only because of the timing of this, like voting forward with only a quorum without more people is adding a lot of work to our workload, not knowing who will be able to commit to some of these tasks, but I'm happy to go forward.
Kate, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
Jill on mute, that must be her second.
Yeah, Ken.
And are we all in favor?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so we will coordinate with the applicant on getting a community meeting scheduled for November fifteenth. The planning commission does not have a meeting on October eighteenth. So on November first, we'll give some logistical overview about the outreach and the community meeting agenda. And then it'll move forward from there.
So on the November first, are you going to want us to be part of that meeting?
Um, TBD. Probably not. Well, it's mainly just to go over the agenda and how the planning commission is going to conduct the meeting, but we'll touch base with you closer to that date.
Then you'll give us some guidance on what you're going to want us to do ahead of November fifteenth. Is that correct?
Yeah. You've already provided the about an envelope, but we'll be in coordination about how we're setting up the community meeting and the outreach.
Okay, great, great. Well, thank you all very much.
Yes, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Turtle pond neighbors are going to be happy to that the horse passenger stays there.
And and that there's not a house as well.
Yeah, and my next door neighbor is a savage as well, too.
Cancel me if there's any more butter requirements that I could let them know.
That's a, that's a little consultant.
The worst.
For those who are still on Zoom, I'm putting the select board agenda link in the chat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you. Take care. Are we doing it now? Well, I just have a minute to adjourn to the select board meeting. I, you can vote to go there and just go there. Vote with your feet, I guess. Anything else on our agenda?
Correct, that's it.
Okay.
Well, all right. Thanks, guys.
I'm going to walk over in person.